Hey, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law. GL Chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's July sixteen, two thousand twenty-two revised order of sending remote participation by all members. Any meeting of a public rally. This meeting of the select board and the joint meeting, the select board and planning board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. Our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person, but for those who wish to do so remotely. For those who are not in person, any effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to MGL seven C thirty-eight twenty F, notifying the chair of the public body. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Beginning a meeting with fair account for other attendees of any such recordings. This meeting is being recorded by the Burke Garage, the County Greg Barrington, CTSB, and other members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. A listing of agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, other items not listed may be brought up or discussed to the extent permitted by law. So there are all members of the planning board are present. And the select board Eric is absent tonight, and the other four members are here, there's no one remote, so we do not have to take roll call votes. Uh, I will turn this over to the chair of the joint select board, planning board, housing subcommittee.
Thank you very much. Uh. I wanted to first thank the other subcommittee members, um, select board member of our field lead. And planning board members, Malcolm Vick and Sharon Vega. Um, we've had a big task exploring some of the possible housing initiatives and programs and policies. And we wanted to um direct you to two proposals that we'd like to discuss uh tonight, just to open the door. And uh, we're gonna start with Malcolm, he's gonna talk to you about um the worksheet that we've been working off of. And then we'll go right into the uh the two proposals, so.
Yeah, I would five minutes, I'd like to talk about uh this uh uh housing issue worksheet um. Like this was sent out there, but um. Uh, this is a summary sheet of the housing initiatives that have been presented to and discussed by the subcommittee. Uh, some of these require action by the planning board, some require action by the select board, some require staff. Uh, or nonprofits to uh to follow up and run it. Um, the purpose tonight is kind of kind of give you a status of, you know, what we've, what we've documented and what we've worked on. Um, I'm gonna highlight a few of the things, um. Chris, if you go down um to uh the bottom half. Um, there were some highlighted items, um. The initiative that's the furthest along is number twenty-three, which was a citizen's petition put together by Jonathan, it's already ready for town meeting. So that's the one that's furthest along. Uh, I'm gonna call your attention to the number nineteen, which is uh related to the um. Uh, senior tax deferral program. Uh, Vivian Orvasky made a presentation to the committee about the senior tax deferral program and how to approve it. Uh, especially with the participation, there's only one participant so far. Uh, she has a couple of um proposals that. Uh, can be enacted by the select board, they don't require a town meeting approval. So we recommended to her that she bring this directly to the select board uh with our endorsement. So I think that's gonna be scheduled for a future select board meeting. Um, Lee is gonna talk about numbers uh um. Uh, thirteen and twenty, which are uh initiatives that require home rule petitions. So that means before it can get uh go to legislature for a home rule petition, it has to be uh approved by a town meeting. Which means there's some urgency if we want to do this to uh to to start on those two initiatives. And I'd also like to call your attention to um two others uh that were uh last Thursday were forwarded to the select board by the planning board. Uh, number fifteen is a zoning uh bylaw change. Uh, that we've uh that there's a planning board uh forwarded. Number twelve is um actually uh a general bylaw change, which uh is is now in the um purview of the slide board. Uh, number twelve, what it does is uh it would uh in in increase. The possibility of housing by allowing larger lots that have moved into uh curb cuts. And Jonathan, I think that's a special permit, isn't it? Uh, uh, to get the second, the.
The curb cut is just a permit from the slide board.
Yeah, it's a permit from the slide board, but uh and uh. So that's uh that that was also there, so um. The rest of these items, I would, I would uh really recommend if you have any uh comments or or, I mean, a lot of these are subjective uh judgments on these things. You got any comments on anything, please forward and thus I don't want to take a whole meeting discussing each one of these things, but who's, we can spend. Two hours uh last week talking about a couple of them, so uh, but if you have any other comments, please forward to any of us. Or uh even better, uh come to a meeting and work your uh what you concerned.
Okay, okay. May I just ask, um, the, I I like how you have it organized, that's great, and I think a useful tool for us to sort of work through them. So, and thank you very much for your efforts here. Um, the impact score.
Yeah, we we really haven't vetted that, but it was really a way. It was really a way to uh try to work through uh, I mean, the concept behind the impact, uh and leaving, these are my numbers, we really haven't done it in the committee yet. But the concept is if it's directly impacts housing, it gets a higher number. If it indirectly impacts housing, it gets lower number.
Okay.
Uh, if it directs a lot of housing, it gets a higher number. If it, if it potentially impacts fewer, it gets a lower number, so that that's, that's really the rationale, but we really, that's one person's opinion, the committee really hasn't done it yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Malcolm. Yeah, I'm just, you know, one thing, there's so many different actions and strategies and policies and programs, so we, you know. We looked at a whole range of things, you know, from the master plan to the housing needs assessment to one Berkshire's housing vision. So we just kind of basically threw everything in here.
Yep.
And tried to wade through it and start coalescing everything and and really, you know, started doing a deeper dive. And the two proposals that I'll be speaking about tonight are the ones that take the longest amount of time, you know, it's a multi-year possibly strategy. Um, and so we wanted to kind of get that going, and it doesn't mean that it's any more important than anything else. It's just that we realized that, you know, to start the conversation now is probably better than than holding off, so um. And our intention is to look at everything and do a deeper dive, but some things are uh more aspirational and some things are town staff. Um, one of the items that rose above everything is, you know, do we want to talk about getting a, you know, housing staff person? Because as you can see, it's a huge amount of things that we're doing, and um it's a lot for volunteer organizations, a lot for, you know, Chris. So that's kind of a bigger discussion, um, you know, when you look at the now things that you could do. You know, that might be a bigger discussion later on, but we just wanted to find a way to kind of dive in and say, okay, these are the different things available. And it's also dynamic documents, so we're adding to it constantly, you know, we appreciate when people give us uh things that they've heard about in other towns. We'll add it there and we'll start talking about that, so this is not closed, this is just dynamic, it's progressive, we, you know, we're trying to take as much input as possible. And just kind of step through it, so.
One one thing that helped him point it out that town meeting is coming up thoroughly. I I think what we want to do is make a recommendation to continue work on this to send it to town staff. I don't know that the, and either of these two are gonna be ready for this town meeting, but it's very likely to be a town meeting, special town meeting in September. Or maybe would be more realistic uh that to have these ready for that, and make sure we've really vetted it thoroughly.
Yeah, a lot of these, I mean, uh except for the ones like, uh, you know, Jonathan's, the ones that you said, and it's smaller, because it really, we're at a concept stage.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah.
Okay, so I'll I'll go briefly into um the first one, which is the affordable housing um. Exemption, so what I'll do is I just made it real basic, and I'm gonna read the slides, just for people that haven't seen the slides before. I know there was an executive summary, um, so we'll just go through the basic points and then we'll open up a discussion, so um. Great Barrington is grappling with a housing crisis that adversely affects the community's sustainability, workforce, and quality of life. Increased housing costs are displacing long-time residents and demand for affordable housing far out of strict supply. So the first one is tax exemption for owners of affordable year-round rental housing. Strategy: Increase affordable, long-term rental housing inventory by incentivizing property owners. Property owners who provide affordable housing are exempt from paying property tax on the acquisition of their property. Being rented at or below affordable rates to income-eligible households. The Affordable Housing Exemption is a standalone proposal, it should not be confused with the residential exemption. Long-term rentals only. To qualify for exemption, the housing unit must be leased for the entire fiscal year, twelve months at least. Income-eligible household only, up to eighty percent of area median income. Unit must be leased to income-eligible renters with verified tax returns. Rent assumed that all landlord pays, that the landlord pays all of utilities. An allowance for any utilities paid by tenants must be deducted from these rents. And it's a question of um cap allowance based on a percentage of total utility cost, so this was. An item that someone said, well, if utilities are very cost prohibitive, would we want to um possibly cap the allowance? The exemption is granted by the principal assessor year to year. If a property qualifies for that year and exemption is granted, no deed restrictions are required. Ooh, glad I brought my glasses. Um. An owner of a duplex lives in one unit and rents, this is an exemption uh example. An owner of a duplex lives in one unit and rents out the other unit of equal size to income-eligible household. Without this exemption, the property owner would have a tax burden of six thousand dollars. At least for the full fiscal year, the owner could apply for a property tax exemption, and if granted, would pay property tax. For the year of only three thousand dollars for half the full tax burden. Therefore, this affordable ha- housing exemption would save the owner three thousand dollars in real estate taxes. Case study, Provincetown. At an April two thousand two special town meeting, Provincetown voters approved Article nine to submit a home rule petition for special state legislation. Allowing the town to offer a property tax exemption. This town meeting article was introduced to the state legislature as Senate Bill twenty-three twenty-five. Following enact- enactment of the house uh by House and Senate, the bill was placed before the governor on December ninth, two thousand two. Ten days later, on December eighteenth, two thousand two, Acting Governor Jane Swift signed the bill into law. This act acquired acceptance by Provincetown voters at a subsequent town meeting in order to take effect. In May of two thousand three, voters approved the acceptance of chapter four oh eight of the Acts of two thousand two. Providing for a property tax exemption for affordable year-round rental units in Provincetown. The program went into effect July first, two thousand three, approximately fifteen months later. Uh, this is just to give you a sense of, um, this is actually a five-page application that Provincetown has. And this is just to give you a little snapshot of some of the questions that um is on their application next to. Uh, this is part of their application, um, it very um. This, you know, it specifies the the uh low income in terms of the low income rent units. Um, so there's no question on who would be qualified um next. And this is something that um the Provincetown Assessor uh uses to do the calculation, so you can see that there's um. There's a calculator, and once they have this punched in, it's it's pretty straightforward. So they just take, you know, the non uh affordable housing square footage um with the uh square footage that is exempted, and they work it out. Next please. Uh, this is, uh, I thought, found this very interesting, this is the Provincetown historical data. So they can track each year from the beginning that it um was at first enacted to uh this up to two thousand twenty-two. So you can see that there was a slow take-up and increased, is that has increased substantially over the years. Uh, one note is that their um, their tax rate is substantially lower than Great Barrington, so that that's something to keep in mind. Next slide, please. Pros and cons. Pros allow allows for a small-scale scattered sites approach to affordable housing. Versing versus grouping lower-income renters in dense housing developments. Offers a significant cost-saving alternative to building new housing. A new unit of affordable housing can cost between two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. Incentivize property owners to offer housing that is affordable to local workforce rather than charge higher rents or operate short-term rentals. Con, lost revenue to town. Uh, exemptions can be capped and budgeted annually to control revenue loss. So for example, if um there's an average, say, three thousand dollars per unit. Times ten exemptions, you could figure it's gonna be approximately thirty thousand dollars of revenue loss. Requires a multi-step process. Town meeting approval by a majority vote is needed. If approved, the home rule petition would be filed in the state legislature. Once the legislature approves the home rule petition, the governor must sign it. Town meeting then must vote to approve the acceptance of the signed legislation. Home rule petition can be right-sized for Great Barrington, for example, number of of annual exemptions can be controlled. Uh, exempted properties can be inspected for quality control. Non-resident owners can be encouraged to participate, and obviously, there's a lot more, but this is just a a few. Proposed next steps, public input, questions and comments. Town assessor presents to select board, invite Provincetown assessor to a select board meeting. Town staff drafts home rule petition and town meeting vote. Uh, thank you, so um, again, this is just to uh ask for permission to continue the study, continue the public comment. Get everyone's thoughts on board, just so we can, we can start the the process of exploring this as a possibility, so. Um, you know, some of the items included here doesn't mean that's how it's gonna go, but it's just to give you a sense of of Provincetown, especially we have a precedent there. Um, we have an assessor willing to help us step through that, that Ross has been in touch with, so there is some help, it's not gonna, we're not gonna be shooting the door. Um, so that is the uh.
Comments, questions, next steps?
So who pays? Who pays for it?
Hmm, well, I mean, this is one, one, I don't know, I mean, we, we have to weigh out the pros and cons, we have to realize that there is a need for affordable housing. Um, so that everything can be budgeted and it's gonna come from somewhere. So really, the way, yeah, yeah, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to weigh the pros and cons and where that money will come from.
That's why, why you're telling them.
So, yeah, yeah, the nice thing is that, you know, there's a way to project it to a point that we can say either. Put a cap or put a dollar number on it and say, you know, maybe for the first year, we wanna see what the take-up's like and, you know, start slowly. Uh, so there's various ways to look at it, so.
I have two questions, one is, um, how successful has it proven to be in Provincetown? And the second one is, how different is our housing stock from Great Barrington?
I mean, I I don't have all the answers, but just from the historical data, you can see, you know, how it started in thirty, exactly, yeah. Um, and it's, it's one of these things, again, you know, they have a different tax rate, their tax rate is substantially lower, so. We might want to look at tax rate and see, you know, are we prepared to have that le- uh loss of revenue? And but then to Jonathan's point, where is that gonna come from? So, you know, how important is, you know, really tackling this housing crisis? Are we prepared to dip our toes in and and start down this path? So that there's a lot, a lot of questions.
Who monitors this program?
Well, that, that's a question for the assessor, um, obviously, we have one, you know, we have a small staff of of in that department and.
Is Ross gonna do the inspections?
Well, I mean, these, these are all questions, so so that's, that's why we're looking for further study.
And that would be a good question for um Provincetown in terms of, did they have to add staff, to, you know, who does inspections? Is that a problem, is there a problem, is looking at those numbers you there, the the rental? I assume the rental rate for.
Hmm.
For a three-bedroom is more than I charged for either of my three bedrooms. So what would it be in Great Barrington? Well, we have uh the uh chart that Chris gave to the planning board, which has the eighty percent rates for Great Barrington. Which are all, you know, two or three hundred dollars under what is estimated to be the market rates.
What would the, what would those be? I don't have that in common.
Uh, I don't have it either, so, but that's, I mean, yeah, that's good, I mean, it's a good question, but it, I mean. As far as the cost of the town goes, there is a cost to the town, sure, and the question is whether um. You know, getting ten units for, you know, thirty thousand dollars a year, if that's what it is, is worthwhile doing. Compared to other uh other ways. But from what I've seen, that's pretty cost-effective, they can get ten, ten units for thirty, uh, three, thirty thousand dollars a year.
It um, actually, you were gonna pointed it out from the coverage I read of your subcommittee meeting that. You know, in the slide show, you compare it to the two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a unit. That's not local taxpayer dollars, right? We got forty-five units coming, didn't cost us anything.
Well, yeah, they did.
Um, but not on, not um.
No, I mean, you know, I think we need a lot of different houses.
I have a long list of questions, including, but the biggest one I'll throw out now, the others I'll give to staff, because it's obviously worth studying. Actually, obviously, because Pedro and I suggested it a year ago. Versus I do.
Um, I thought it was mine.
We have a whole list. The um, the um. My biggest fear is we find out there are already thirty people renting below, like Jonathan is now gonna get a nice tax break and it doesn't give us an extra apartment.
I I agree with that, that's one of my concerns, I mean, it's, it's one thing to have ten new units for thirty thousand dollars a year.
But I don't, I don't know when tax is called. Oh, right.
So I take them out?
Or or. When a landlord's. Your landlord's advertising department, the landlord can't budget on what they can on rental, they know what is gonna be rented by one, two, or three, or four people. I think your family is on to that.
Which is, this is all why we're not ready to send this to the town meeting, we're not, we're not close to ready. And that we need to have further research on this, it's, the concept may be good, but how practical is it, how would we, how do we enact this? And and three thousand dollars is is less than half of what I pay.
Right.
So it wouldn't make me whole.
And and one of the reasons, you know, we wanna really bring this forward is, you know, rather than just having it on a piece of paper as a suggestion. You know, really have this, this vibrant discussion and throw everything out here and and start the process of saying, okay, well, that's a great point, let's explore that further. So um really, that's what we're trying to do, is just push it down the road and have these deep dives.
Sorry, the more immediate practical question I have, because we did, this committee sent, sorry, this committee. Sent the list to town staff about a year ago, with this and a few others. Do we have the staff capacity to do this, uh, which is really, I don't know, I guess probably a Mark question.
But I think Mark's on the phone, you know, the line. We do have the staff capacity to do the research.
Right, that's, that's the question.
But then the second part of that is, do we have?
Well, that's the research, right?
Right, the research, but do we have the capacity to to follow this through after it's voted on and goes through the fifteen months? And that's gonna be part of the uh research, is, it's gonna cost town forty-five thousand for a part-time staffer to follow this program along, and then you say, oh, well. Is that, I'm really saving money.
I'm worried about that yet, but the, again, this committee a year ago, did this and five other suggestions that staff hasn't had a chance to get to. Um, so that, I guess that's my concern, does, I mean, this is on that list, but so is um. Uh, you know, buyout of short-term rentals, town financing, uh, tax in, tax increase to Pearl, if you build an ADU in your backyard. Like, there's a bunch of things here, that one wouldn't cost town anything. Um, that the staff hasn't gotten to yet.
Well, that's why the beauty of the housing subcommittee is that we're dedicated to doing a deeper dive, so before this was just on a piece of paper. Where we started actually going and doing the homework, so, you know, whether we continue down this path and do the deeper dives, so we take the pressure off the staff. Is something that we would seek guidance.
I guess, I must say, the defer of the tax increase uh has not gotten on our.
Okay, right.
Well, I'll get that.
Right, if, so, yeah, if I build a a ADU in my backyard, my assessment goes up by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars immediately. Um, if we defer that, or you only lose money on the people who would have done that anyway. Um.
That, that's been something that's going around, I mean, we've talked about that as well, and so it's not, that's not going around.
No, it's just not on the list.
Right, I guess, not on the list, but you're, why this question, but I won't ask that here, that's a subcommittee question.
So the question is, do we want to move this forward to staff to continue to lose? That's really a question.
Yeah, and my, my related question is, is this something that the subcommittee intends to carry forward, or or it goes to the assessor and? And for some more.
This, this would be, or we're done with it.
Okay, so you've moved it out of, yeah, okay, and so in terms of. Public comment and education after there's some research on that would then come back to the joint boards, do you think, or?
No, that's good. So this is the first initiative that we brought.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a zoning thing, so I think it would live with the select board potentially, yeah, we're happy to support you, but.
According to the housing trust and finance committee, like, you want to put it away and.
Well, it's different for wanting in or who ultimately has the responsibility to bring it forward, you're right. There, there's others that need to wait, but I, but I agree with you, if one of them is more zoning-oriented than issue builder, you might as well, for sure. But if it's not, then it should go to someone.
But in terms of public outreach, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, if it lives with the select board, it doesn't have to be the select board for public outreach.
No, no. So it comes back to our committee, yeah. If, if, if the, if this joint committee wants the housing subcommittee to take on a public outreach on some of these initiatives, and. That's.
They're sharing the burden, basically.
Yeah. Okay, so what are we looking for, a vote to move this to staff?
Move this to staff.
So do we have anyone that would make a motion, what are we calling this initiative, Lee?
Uh, this is the uh, yeah, it's. It's the tax exemption for owners of affordable year-round rental housing.
Wow, you had a good acronym for that one.
It's, I know, eh, the Affordable Housing Exemption.
Okay, I'll make a motion um to advance the affordable housing exemption from the subcommittee. The joint subcommittee to town staff. Is that the right motion? Does that work for me?
Looks good. I'll sign it.
Thank you. We have any discussion? No? You, you don't need a roll call vote?
No.
Okay. Hi?
Hi. Alright. Did anyone have votes? Good. Go on.
Alright, um.
Concernation.
Yeah. Okay, the second. Now, I'll step, I'll do the same thing, I'll just step through the little basics and. Okay, quick. Alright, I won't repeat this, um, next slide, come on. Okay, this is the real estate transfer fee to support affordable and workforce housing. Goal: To establish a sustainable revenue source for the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund. A real estate transfer fee, the fee, would be an effective and efficient tool for raising necessary revenue to support affordable housing in Great Barrington. A fee between half percent and two percent would be applied to certain real estate transactions. Certain transactions could include. Properties sold in Great Barrington above an established percentage of the median sale price for single-family homes in Great Barrington. For example, one hundred and fifty percent, two hundred percent, or. Properties sold in Great Barrington above an established dollar amount, for example, homes sold above one million dollars. The fee could be split between buyer and seller, or paid only by the buyer or by the seller. Exemptions can be added and adopted in the future. Exemptions could include transfers between family members, transfers for affordable housing use. Transfers of convenience or native gifts. Transfers involving vulnerable populations. Transfers involving owner occupants, uh occupant, sellers, and buyers will be owner occupants.
Like, the last one was.
Uh, so the reason why this was out is that Somerville is actually doing it, they are um honing in on vacation, um, second homes, second homeowners. So they are exempting um anyone that is a owner occupant, so that was just one exemption that they brought in.
And what if the buyer changed, changed their mind?
And then, they've already paid the transfer fees.
No, there's no exception. Either way. Either way. Hmm, they can change it either way. Their buyer, they didn't, you know, they're, they pay the fee, change their mind, because there's COVID, they move here.
There, there might, I'm sure there's other conditions probably, but I, that was just one that Somerville had some. Fee-generated revenue would be deposited annually in the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or the line is it on? Don't make her say it again?
No, I was just gonna say, probably have to be appropriate, yeah, we'll check.
The money would then be used to provide affordable rental and home ownership opportunities to low and moderate income households in Great Barrington. Public input assessor data, local prices and market conditions would help shape the exemptions, terms and conditions of the transfer. This is an example, uh, this is an assessor data worksheet. Um, thank you to Ross for helping me with this. This is just for illustration only. It's not to give, um, you know, real data, but it's showing how the assessor could potentially project annually yields using historical fiscal year property sale data. Some, some of the questions, uh, posed could be, you know, what property sales can trigger a fee? Um, so that's where this highlight is. So if, let's say it was two hundred percent over the median sale price, um, you would take a spreadsheet and, and find that point and then include everything below that. Um, what would the estimated loss of revenue, or what would be the estimated loss of revenue slash yield to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? So again, you know, there's a way to look at the historical data and get a sense of, you know, setting this benchmark. Um, and, you know, at, at what point would a transfer fee be triggered? So this is just real rough math. Um, don't be hold, hold me to this, but it's a way to kind of establish, okay, what's the median, um, sales price of that year? And, you know, what would a hundred and twenty percent look like? Um, what would a hundred and fifty percent look like? And then calculate that to the annual yield. And then, uh, you know, come up with, okay, what's, what's two percent fee? This is what it would yield. So there, there's a calculation that you could do to, you know, hone in on what this might look like. So this is, again, just for illustration, but it's to show you that there is an ability to, to, um, give a sense of what it might look like.
Yeah, estimated loss of revenue to who?
To the town. Oh, gosh, oh, sorry, I was.
Wrong, wrong one.
I meant to say, uh, yes, I was probably doing two things. So this would, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this would be what would the estimated yield to be the Affordable Housing Trust? As, I think I was reading two slides at one. So that, yeah, the question is what the yield would be. Sample scenario, so, uh, two percent transfer fee split between the buyer and seller. Uh, for a non-exempt transfer with a purchase price of one million dollars, the seller would be required to pay ten thousand dollars, one percent. The buyer would be required to pay ten thousand dollars, one percent, for a total payment of twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars would be deposited into the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The real estate transfer fee is supported by other municipalities. Nine municipalities have successfully passed transfer fee home rule petitions, including Nantucket, Provincetown, Chatham, Concord, and Somerville. The Emherst, North Hampton, and others are working toward filing. A bill has also been filed H three seven seven and S eight sixty-eight that would allow communities to opt in without applying special acts. This is just, uh, snapshots of some of the legislation that has been filed. This is from Nantucket and this is the, um, special act from Jillian Comerford. Discussion topics, goals and expectations of the transfer fee, what should be taxed, who pays the fee, what fee percentage, what exemption should be included, and awarding of the home rule petition.
When you say goals and expectations of the transfer fee, what do you mean by that a little?
Um, I guess if, if the money is going to be going into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you know, what's the expectations of that for workforce housing? Is it for moderate? Are we trying to build housing? You know, we trying to accumulate the money and build housing? Are we just trying to apply it to programs or policies? So, you know, really, what's the goal of this accumulation, um, of, of money that would potentially go into the, the housing trust fund?
Maybe not hire a housing.
Exactly.
Do the other initiatives.
Exactly. So it, it's, it's somehow supporting, um, affordable and workforce housing. So I think that's it, the last one. Um, so proposed and accepted, very similar, uh, public input, questions and comments. Town assessor presents the select board. We could invite other municipalities to a select board meeting. Town staff to draft a home rule petition and town meeting vote. Um, so, you know, this thinking, so this is, you know, a very complex, um, program and proposal. Um, there's a lot that we can add it to look at. There's a lot of ways of slicing and dicing. Um, and, you know, this is very, very complex, but I think it's worth taking a, a, a deeper dive into it.
Specifically, what do we think that deeper dive entails? Is that having the assessor look at historical sales data and try and make some forward-looking projections?
We'll do what some of your retails have done and see how that would impact our town in a way desirable.
Yeah.
Chris, is this anything that, um, the RPC can assist us with under any of our technical assistance?
Possible.
Did you look at the CPC and, and why we don't transfer eighty percent of the CPC funds into affordable housing?
Well, I mean, there's, we need a lot of money for affordable housing, so, I mean, it's.
Well, you, you get a lot of money. Why would we do that? Well, if you want to support affordable housing and you want to give it to the affordable housing. You can, you can assign eighty percent.
Right.
So the CPC funding every, every year.
But that would take away from all the other.
We need more open space. Probably not. You're still gonna give them ten percent.
We're, we're already spending a lot of that, yeah, funding on housing.
I mean, there are other housing initiatives that go into the Affordable Housing Trust.
I bring this up, I, I do bring this up every year and see that we should.
We have the same.
More, or we should set a limit, or we should set an amount aside that we want to dedicate. And even the, what was it? This, was it this year? Or was it last year? I, I maybe, I didn't push much this year. But I think last year you did like thirty percent of the funds, and even that didn't get. I think I got one other person so that we could get to discussion, but that's the votes that happened. And so with the committee, the way it's done, I mean, you need the committee to agree to it and it's just not, it's not there. Um, I mean, I try to make the argument that some of these things, especially the town side of it, you know, for historical and open space, that those are things that town meeting voters will probably pay for without.
So I'm, I'm just saying, it's supposed to be a couple of how interest comes to the CPC to fund that they've been denied.
Well, I, I don't, well, I don't know if we're funding them. I don't, I don't think we're funding them at a hundred percent. And I think because of how they're treated, I don't know if they're coming with everything they want as well. I think maybe they're being, you know, they're being, they're planning what they're doing to try to, you know, so they got a positive outcome, um, as opposed to coming saying, we want seventy-five percent of funds. Um, so, I mean, you know, and, and that's the argument that gets thrown back, you know, what affordable housing projects has the committee not funded? Um, I don't know, it's, you know, like, we can talk about that it's a crisis, but, you know, and, and with CPC, you don't have to do it like seventy-five percent forever. You could do seventy-five percent for this year, you know, and it's just those funds in that year that are put aside.
In Nantucket, they, they took one year and they allowed a eighty percent to create a position, a housing position in Nantucket that over that first year was so successful that they created a permanent job.
Well, a couple, a couple things. First of all, we're not here to tell the CPC what to do, but how they work is you make a request. The Affordable Housing Trust hasn't requested eighty percent. And the way that affordable housing, you know, this year, the way that they requested wasn't necessarily after the standards that were necessary to get what they wanted. But if they asked eighty percent and got turned down.
But this would just give them money without any project.
Well, this one, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, but you're saying that why isn't the Affordable Housing Trust just getting eighty percent of the CP, C money? Well, the way it works is the initiative has to be Affordable Housing Trust asking for that unless the select board and planning board asks the CPC for it.
I mean, this gives, that could happen, right?
Well, this is the point, sorry, if I made for a second, that I was trying to make, right? That maybe the select board would like to do that and to do that to create a position for one year, fund a position that's just studying all of these housing initiatives and that we can use CPC money.
Well, I, I think we're discussing a proposal and not a C.
Yeah.
And I think that proposal could allow the house, Affordable Housing Trust to hire somebody who could then actually go out and raise money. If they have to do a proposal.
Yes.
But I think.
Right.
Thanks, John. First of all, you're, you're taxing people's principal resource. So, you know, all my equity is in my house. And I'm going to sell it. And then I have to pay you a tax for that. And the, there's a capital gains tax. If you exceed five hundred thousand, if you're married, you get five hundred thousand tax-free of profit. Five hundred thousand, tax-free. You're gonna tax that. And you know, it's, you know, so if you're selling your house, you have to sell your house so you can move to Timble Farms. And you want to pay those, have those people pay a tax? I mean, come on.
Exemptions come in. So, you know, with those cases, the town has the ability to say, okay, you know, if it's someone that's living there X amount of years, if it's, let's say, a resident, if it's, you know, transfer. So there are exemptions that we could put to this. So you, you're, you're basically satisfying the need for money to create and support affordable and workforce housing, but you're looking after residents that are in the same shoes as you've mentioned. So there are ways to, to maneuver this that, you know, we are making sure that people aren't being penalized.
I don't think there's any harm in looking into it a little bit further and studying it. I think the point you're raising is one that is good in terms of kind of vetting the issue and trying to figure out what the potential benefits are and what the potential risks are, and then weighing it and deciding. I mean, that's all we're, we're not agreeing this is the way we need to go right now. We're just saying, let's move it to the next phase and look into.
But you're also, you're talking about affordable housing. What is this gonna do? This is gonna raise the price of housing.
But they're talking about housing.
It doesn't, it, it doesn't matter. Anyone who knows they're gonna have to pay a twenty percent ta, or two percent tax is gonna raise their, their price. It goes without saying.
But if you, but if you do it at a dollar amount rather than median, then you know what you're in for, right? And what, and with that, is, how flexible is that? Does, is this select board able to change that amount? Or does it have to go back to?
What, each year, like year to year? Um, I do not know if you could, I know you can add exemptions later. Um, once something's adopted, you can't take it away, but, um, so whether you have, like, yeah. So that, that, that's what we would want to make sure. Let's say we say anything over a million dollars are locked into that, you know? So really, we would probably look at the percentage, what might be likely. But it's interesting with Somerville, they were actually a lot stricter in the beginning. And then through a year of discussion and public input, that's when they settled on owner occupants. So they were trying to protect the residents, no matter how much your house was. And then they started to zero in on vacation homes and second homeowners. And they said, okay, anyone that is, is buying a second home, that's, you know, having a, a negative effect on people that live here full-time. So they actually had, had rolled it back considerably for that reason that you're bringing up. So that is something that we could look into, discuss.
So what if, what if you're selling it at a loss?
Well, that, this is all things that, you know.
Don't we have transfer tax in Massachusetts now? So, I mean, when you buy a house, you already pay a transfer tax. Yeah, so this is local search.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more money.
Basically, I'm, I'm gonna echo variation with, uh, Brandy just says, there are always counts. Some that have already implemented this, others that are in process, and then, I mean, I think there's so much that we can learn. There's all the questions that we're asking here, actually, are being experienced in theory in all these other places. And it will give us a chance with time to learn more. Get some real answers relevant to us.
Yeah, I, um, the, I, first of all, I would not vote against studying anything that could help, so, um, good to the end. But, and I was glad to see one of the things of the next steps is to find out what a affordable housing trust needs. I'm really hesitant to create a tax and then decide later, I'm gonna spend it, we've already done that with the sort of rental tax, the street percent. Um, you know, how much does the Affordable Housing Trust need? What are they going to do with it? Um, you know, we can't ask holders to approve the tax without telling them that. So I'd like, I guess I'm, I would ask, like, part of this to also be asking the Affordable Housing Trust to come up with a, you know, a budget and some programs.
That sounds, yeah, accountability, a plan.
Absolutely.
So do we have a vote? The last one.
So, well, anyways, you go back to Pedro's thing for a second, is that I wonder, like, especially if you're gonna start giving the affordable, if you're gonna give the trust a lot of money, I think you'd want more staff involvement.
We're, we're well away from giving the trust a lot of money. This would only be to look a little bit further in this and sort of assess the fiscal impacts.
But I mean, when you're asking the trust what they're gonna do with money that potentially they're gonna be given, you know, I mean, eventually it's gonna be too much work for the trust. You know, and like, who's gonna manage? And some of these, you know, who's gonna hold the restriction? Who's gonna manage it? And.
So do we not look at what the fiscal effects are, or do we want?
No, we, we do, but I just, I just wanna echo Pedro's point that we may wanna, like, and this is the right, I think this is the committee to start talking about it, whether or not there should be staff, you know, and try it.
Well, I mean, that we, uh, move this forward to, to pass this, like, we have to stay up, uh, and explore this further.
So I'm gonna move on in a second. Any other discussion? All day.
Hi.
Of station.
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll call again. I, I, I always would vote against it.
Um, so that wraps up our proposal and thank you very much.
Uh, so different speaker. It's all, come right up. Oh, is there a, is there a microphone there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I use the microphone?
You should sort of hold this.
Hey, uh, Michelle, just let me know, Chris.
People in the audience can hear Michelle, please let us know. Go ahead.
Uh, Michelle LeBeare, seventy Division Street. Um, actually, I wasn't going to speak on this tonight, um, but, um, I practically had a stroke in the back of the room over this. Uh, first off, I would like to request copies of both PowerPoints. If I may. Okay, it wasn't in the packet. I have the packet here, although the executive summary was, um. I, I'm wondering on the on the exception for, uh, landlords. Uh, I know for years it's been talked about the residential exemption. One of the things that had come out was how it would negatively impact those who have rental properties. I'm just going to say what's on my mind. I'm wondering if this is just a way to get around that. Number one. Number two. Um, the comment, gee, the money's gotta come from somewhere. Well, my taxes just went up this year. Again, my husband and I are looking at retirement. Unfortunately, the short-term rental bylaw pretty much at that short and we're working even longer. Um, so I'm really afraid that this is just going to shift tax burden onto other people. I don't want you to keep on, born and raised here, living in the family homestead. And I know this is all about affordable housing, but when you make people who have housing now making it not affordable, which is what's going to happen to my husband and I, um, that's upsetting and I would be opposed to it. Uh, and now we're talking about another tax. So, all right, my husband and I, short-term rental, we can't do what we wanted to do shortly. It's greatly curtailed. So we said, yeah, but like Jonathan said, and Jonathan, thank you for bringing it up. Most of us, our nest egg is our home. And if my husband and I say, listen, we just can't afford to stay here anymore, let's sell the house, make whatever money we can make and move on. Well, I already pay a surcharge. That's a CPA surcharge. If I do short-term rental, I'm also going to pay another tax. And now you're telling me, if I sell my house, you're gonna tax me on that. And I agree with Jonathan. So people, I didn't know, but.
That looks hard.
Back in the room, and I said, he's saying what I'm thinking. And I think enough's enough. You're swooping up some people. I don't think you're intending to swoop up, but someone like myself, I work for a public school district. And if you knew, well, my husband and I, he works for an out, but we'll leave him together, you go home, you're pouring into a living. But we manage. We don't take vacations, nothing. And that's to hold on to the homestead, which I ideally wanted to leave to our daughter, but it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do that. So I, I'm glad there's going to be further study, but keep my comments in mind. Because at the public input, you're going to hear it again. And I think we're just going way too far. You're hurting people. And I think we're just going way too far. You're hurting people. You're going to hurt people. And like I said, the safety net was, my husband and I said, if we have to sell, we'll sell. And now you're telling me I'm gonna pay another tax, have to pay year after year after year, paying real estate taxes. And I, I think that it's terrible what you're doing. I know you want affordable housing, but don't take away the homes of the people who have lived here already. I'm not a millionaire, because my house is very modest. But you're going to take that away from us.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else?
Hi.
Paul, you still in here?
Yeah, Polly Shuker, seventy, I'm on Plain Road. I'm here tonight per my email I sent regarding the public hearing for February thirteenth regarding the airport.
Can you do that in select board meeting?
Well, I just wanted to incorporate in the record sheeting tonight, because I don't know when today, the thirteenth, from.
No, no, I understand that, but we're gonna have a full meeting afterward.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand that. I wanna make sure that it's with the planning board. This planning board and select board joint meeting, and I'm also at this one.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any immediate?
Could I raise one, one question?
Okay.
How did the joint committee, how is the joint committee supporting the modifications of the SDR on the, or?
From, I don't always think of select board, said a substitution to be on.
No, I understand, but I brought it up at the, at the committee. And I'd like.
Well, it's on a list. I, I supported personally, uh, and, but I, I don't, we, we haven't taken a vote on it. We didn't take a vote on it.
I did as well, but we haven't, but we haven't taken a vote on it.
Well, can I?
But it's not on the agenda right now, so I'm.
Well, it is on the agenda because it's a joint meeting and, and it actually came out of this committee.
Well, we're not taking a committee vote on it.
Can we, can we ask the subcommittee to weigh in on it?
Sure.
Is that appropriate?
That's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, any immediate? Saying no on this one?
Can I say, well, we really, since we're all here. No, it's just since we're all here, I think that, um, I know it encourages the subcommittee to keep this in mind as you're continuing your work. Um, I've had a concern lately about how we are sort of apportioning or, or deciding how we are going to um, define affordability in town. Um, if you, if you just look at the situation logically, the cost of housing really has nothing to do with wages that people get in town. Right? There is capital that comes into our town that completely, uh, distorts the price of housing for us. So saying, you know, sticking with these HUD rules of eighty percent of area median income is really not, I don't think fair to the people who live here who need housing, who don't qualify for that eighty percent, because they make a lot more money than we. But they don't make enough money to afford the price of housing. It's being distorted by the people who can't afford it from other, you know, that. So when you're talking about a, a proposal, I would encourage that you don't really listen to the HUD eighty percent area median income, and that you expand it maybe to a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty percent. I know that maybe we start, we start to get into some market rate, uh, price rents. But I think that we need to, you know, maybe approach that.
We, we were, we were looking at eighty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent for the tax exemption then. But when we looked at the chart that Chris gave to us, um, it, it showed that actually the rents at a hundred and a hundred and twenty percent of AMI are equal to or greater than the market rents.
Yeah.
So we can't subsidize people at a hundred and twenty percent, or else we're gonna be subsidized and charging more rent.
But if you look at how many people make a hundred and twenty percent, can't find out.
Yeah, I, I, and, and I, you know, at the last DRC meeting, uh, this was brought up as a particular problem, you know, whole game on it. Uh, at the DRC meeting, yeah, I think somebody went into it. It was, it was recognized as a common problem. What's the alternative?
Well, to expand that, that percentage of affordability is, you know.
So, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we have a meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And maybe, maybe it's time that we have some joint meetings where we just have discussions, because we, we haven't had a joint meeting in a while.
Welcome to a planned order.
Yeah. Anyone who has any questions, suggestions, send them to, I assume, Chris.
Yes.
To, to do this.
Thank you, and, and, I'm sorry about that.
So, my unanimous consent, the joint meeting is adjourned.
We just got.
I don't know why.
Feel free to say.
Good evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there are five panelists and fifteen attendees. That's probably our. Okay. We're now in the select board of a meeting. I need a motion to go into, uh, to convene as a role of sewer commission.
I make a motion to convene as sewer.
All of them? All of them?
All right.
It's unanimous. Um. In our packet, we have sewer maintenance for the period January first, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Joe is scared to answer any questions, or anything, so other than take our questions on the bottom. Do, do they have any questions? I just need to refuse on one, because it's freedom center. Okay. I apologize for that, it's supposed to be. Get it. I can refuse on all of them, if you'd like. Probably not a bad idea. Why don't I do that? Any other, anyone have any questions? If not, draw a motion.
Should I be too obvious?
Uh, no, you just got approved, uh, as presented.
Okay. I make a motion to approve as presented the, uh, maintenance, sewer maintenance for the period of January first, twenty twenty-two through uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
You want a second? Exactly. Any discussion? All of them?
All right.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our motion to reconvene as select.
I make a motion to reconvene as presented.
Seven. All of them?
All right.
Unanimous. Okay, we have in our packet the minutes of January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, as amended. That they're gonna find, we got the amendment correct. Draw a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-three, and January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as amended.
Sorry. Any discussion? All of them?
All right.
Unanimous. Select Board's announcement and statements, Garfield?
Uh, nothing, maybe.
Ed? Please.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Tom, you have a report. Mark, go right ahead.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, first of all, I just wanted to apologize for not being there in person tonight and not feeling well, and I'm trying to, uh, avoid sharing it with all of you, so. I just have three.
We apologize. We would have thrown you out, otherwise I can't afford to get Elliot on hold.
I just have three, uh, very, very brief updates for you this evening. Uh, first off is the Houstonic Water Works topic. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know and, uh, let the public know that we were able to access the Houstonic Water Works facilities last Tuesday, or our consultants were. So, uh, they should be able to complete their appraisal in the coming week or so. And I'll reach out to all of you, uh, the select board members, probably later this week with some potential dates. Uh, I was thinking that we would schedule a standalone meeting for this presentation by our consultants. So you'll hear from.
I have a, I want to, I have a question, a couple of comments and a suggestion I'd like to give.
Okay, why don't you start?
Okay.
Okay. That's fine. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, and then continuing on the Houstonic Water Works topic, uh, also included in your packet for this evening is a draft letter from the board urging DEP to step up their enforcement measures uh, as we discussed at a prior meeting. So uh, I know Eric was the one that, that originally mentioned this. He's seen the letter and is comfortable with it, but I just wanted to get the blessing of the board or hear any edits you'd like to make before I send this out.
There's a motion to send this letter to, uh, the, uh, Bureau of Water Resources.
Uh, make a motion to send this letter to the Bureau of Water Resources.
Any discussion? All of them? All right, you have our blessing.
Great, thank you. So Steve will just re-sign that for you, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, moving on to.
I'll give you one, come up with another quarter. Okay. Come, come.
Thanks, thanks a bunch. So Polly Shuker, seventy, I'm on Plain Road. Um, I, I, please incorporate into the record proceedings. A water station should be set up in Great Barrington for Houstonic residents passing through by to and from town. Contrary to the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two Joint Board of Selectmen in Great Barrington Fire District Redental Committee hearing on the possible merger of Houstonic Water Works. Great Barrington does not get its drinking water from the same source as the Houstonic Water Works in Long Pond Road Desert Water Source in Great Barrington. The groundwater source is an infiltration gallery located off of Rover Road approximately a hundred and thirty feet from the Green River. And the aquifer, shallow sand and gravel aquifer along the Green River with no evidence of confined clay in the vicinity of the source. The aquifer is therefore considered highly vulnerable to contamination due to the absence of hydrological, hydrological barriers that can prevent contamination migration from the ground service. Service quoted from and documented in the two thousand and three state and federal source water assessment protection program, Flock Report, written for the Great Barrington Fire District that went to Mr. Atwood. And giving a highlighted copy to town manager Mark Brinsky as he received it in two thousand and three, but hopes he will distribute it to the rest of the board. And also, the fire district water department main supply is from the aquifer under the Green River Valley. The infiltration galleries and pumping station are located on the Green River east of Rover Road. And the Houstonic Water Works Long Pond Water Source, both quotes from your two thousand thirteen Great Barrington master plan, of which Mr. Atwood was also a member. My property, my entire neighborhood, including the quote, the airport is located in the water quality protection overlay district upstream of the great, of the Green River water supply galleries and in a residential and agricultural area. Any activity, growth, or development here must be regulated to protect the town's drinking water supply, to ensure uses are compatible with residential or agricultural neighbors, both from your two thousand thirteen master plan and giving the town manager highlighted, he hopes he will distribute. So let's share with Great Barrington, let's share Great Barrington's drinking water that is truly great with neighboring Houstonic and set that water station up and continue to support Great Barrington's greatest asset, our drinking water, despite Mr. Atwood and the fire district's erroneous claim and say no to that special permit application filed with you by Berkshire Aviation Enterprise for Great Barrington Regional Airport, as it is in the wrong place. Thank you. I'm gonna give this to you, Chris.
Sure.
It's a copy of the cover sheet for the Flock Report, asking the town to improve their water protection. The documentation on where the aquifer is. My property, with my very small quantity, state and federal rights, the airport, Berkshire Aviation, the central underground tanks, the airport description from your master plan, and Mr. Atwood and Mr. Hanford, we remember, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thanks a bunch.
Here, go, go. Mark, go right ahead.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, moving on to department head updates, I have two announcements this evening. First up is that Polly Man-Selinovich uh, will be retiring in May after eleven years of service to the town as our COA director. Uh, I just wanted to mention that Polly will, will certainly be missed by staff and, uh, and by our senior community. And I also wanted to thank her and wish her all the best in her retirement. So we'll begin, uh, the recruitment process in just a few weeks in hopes of bringing someone on uh, to overlap with her for at least some of her remaining time, if possible. So if you, if you get an opportunity to, uh, see her and thank her, please do. And then, uh, my second announcement for this evening is that Chief Charlie Berger will also be leaving at the end of March. Uh, Chief has been with our, uh, Chief Berger's been with our fire department for twenty-one years. He's been on the department since he was sixteen years old, serving the last ten as our, as our fire chief. So I also wanted to, uh, thank him for his dedication and, uh, to this town and wish him all the best in his new chapter as well. And that recruitment process, uh, for our, our next chief is already underway. The, the ad is live and posted in several locations. And I met recently with our Great Barrington Fire Department, uh, or Fire Fighters Association. I met with their leadership team, uh, twice now. And I have an interim chief recommendation from them. And I have, uh, a list of three members that will, uh, assist with the interview and hiring process. So things are moving along. The last update I have for this evening uh, is related to the Division Street speed trailer data that I included in your packet for, uh, this evening. And I just, uh, real quickly wanted to mention that um, this is early data collected from our, our speed trailers in two locations by the police department. Uh, both of the trailers will remain in place for a little longer, uh, over there. I think in different locations, though, the, the chief is working on that. Uh, the PD uses this data to, um, uh, or data like this to identify times of the day when enforcement is needed. So, uh, you know, clearly with ninety miles of road and two police officers, we have to really, uh, identify times where, where our officers, uh, can focus their time and energy, uh, in the best way. So, uh, this and similar reports, if anyone is interested uh, from other areas in town, wherever we use these speed trailers, and we do at the request of residents, use them in, uh, streets and roads all over, all over town. Uh, anyone interested in looking at those reports can find them on the police department's website. It's greatbarringtonpolice.com. And it's under the tab titled Traffic Data and Complaints. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Michelle, come on.
Michelle LeBeare, seventy Division Street. Uh, first of all, I'm really sad to hear Polly's retiring, Chief Berger is leaving, um.
Because we all are.
Yes, I think that we have an outstanding senior center, and I think that is largely due to Polly, who just recently helped me enroll in Medicare. So, uh, I'm glad she was there to help me before she retired. Um, with regard to the Division Street speed trailers, I just want to publicly thank uh, Chief Story. Although I had come before this board and the town manager several times regarding the speed on Division Street, nothing was done. I just sent one email to Chief Story, and within twenty-four hours, he reached out to me very graciously and explained what he could do. Um, he did do it. That's why the speed trailers are there. When I, he had one speech, well, the town had one speed trailer near the bridge. And when I pointed out that most cars are lowering their speed as they're going down the hill, going towards the bridge, he moved the speed trailer up to the front of my house, which is the raceway. Um, thus, I also pointed out to him, the speed trailer near the Guthrie Church really isn't giving an accurate reading as well, because you're going down the hill, you're decelerating again. Uh, so, uh, I'm glad he's looking at better placement of the trailers. I did share data with some of the neighbors. One neighbor expressed a concern at the high speed of cars coming down north, they rotturing onto Division Street. And I did, uh, mention this to Chief Story as well. But, uh, speaking of the speed on Division Street, I do know we have an agenda item, number six, licenses and permits. And one of the permits is really concerning me because of the, I, if you look at those reports, the volume of cars on Division Street, and then you add their high speed to that volume. And then an event that's going to surely attract a lot of people is just a recipe for an accident. Uh, and bringing alcohol in the mix too. So in any event, I, again, I just wanted to publicly thank Chief Story for being very kind and gracious, uh, when working with me. I actually have encouraged other neighbors to reach out to him directly because of that. Thank you.
But if I miss a state, I, I believe uh, we have listened, I remember the last meeting, I mentioned your concern and asked them to take a look at that hole that you were concerned for, um, that you said maybe you could walk, somebody could walk through. So you have been listening to by the select board.
Right, it's got the times, Garfield, that I appear. But also, I sent a January thirtieth email to the select board. No one responded to me. I invited somebody to meet with me because it seemed like no one really knew what I was talking about, and I was down there again this weekend. But no one responded, saying, hey, you know, I'll stop in, and, and meet me at the bridge and I'll take a look at it. No one did that.
I apologize. I would have my, I had no internet. I apologize. I would have my head, no internet at the time. I certainly would have.
Okay.
Because I understand that I did ask that a little bit.
Like I said, instead of being reactive, town of Great Barrington should be a bit more proactive.
There you go. Licenses and permits. Guthrie Center for three one day beer and wine licenses for their clam gathering event. Friday, June twenty third, Saturday, June twenty fourth, Sunday, June twenty fifth. Please, there's someone on the line.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, yeah, this is Sheba Ross Guthrie. I'm doing well. How are you guys doing today?
Good, good.
Good. I apologize I couldn't be there in person. I actually didn't know that you guys were back to in person, so hopefully next time.
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, but just to give you a little bit of details about the event. So we are planning this event from June twenty third to the twenty fifth. The event will consist of three days of festivities. During the daytime, the Guthrie Center grounds, we would like to have them open to the public for free with music, crafts and workshops for folks to enjoy. A ticketed portion of the event will be held in the building each evening and will consist of headlining acts each night as well as some other informational programs. And that's the portion that we are applying to sell beer and wine for. And yeah, so we, we plan to release some more information in the coming days, but, but yeah, that's the gist of it.
Okay, Michelle, briefly, please.
Michelle LeBeare, seventy Division Street, this is more procedural. I have a question or rather some concerns regarding not so much the beer and the wine, but the B section of the items. So I don't know whether I should talk now or just wait.
No, we're gonna go on A then we'll.
Okay.
No, I make a, I make a motion to approve three one day beer and wine licenses for the clam gathering of the Guthrie Center on Friday, January twenty third from twelve PM to ten PM. Saturday, January twenty fourth from twelve PM to ten PM and Sunday, January twenty fifth from twelve PM to eight PM.
Sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Is this for next year? Why was in January?
Did I say?
Yeah.
I did? Oh, sorry. You are, well, I, I.
So it's June.
Yeah.
Okay, it's unanimous. Next is for Guthrie Center for two temporary weekday entertainment licenses and one temporary Sunday entertainment license for their clam gathering Friday, June twenty third, Saturday, June twenty fourth and Sunday, June twenty fifth. So this is the entertainment part of the beer and wine, Michelle.
Michelle LeBeare, seventy Division Street, again, I just wanted to point out that I grew up on Division Street. And I'm, the Guthrie Center back then is called the Hippie Church. So it's been around as long as I, I can remember. I'm just concerned again with the traffic on Division Street and it seems like a lot of people are going to be attending these events. There was some mention in the permit paperwork regarding a police officer. I strongly encourage having a police officer at the event. Even small events at the Guthrie Center, if you're traveling down Van Duzelville Road, some cars are traveling at a high rate of speed. People are crossing back and forth. I'm really fearful that there's going to be a tragedy there and I think coming a police officer will just allay, allay some of those fears. So I hope that the select board would suggest that that be done. Also, I'm concerned about, this is a residential neighborhood. In the past, there hasn't been an issue to Guthrie Center, but most of the entertainment takes place inside the church. I see from the permit paperwork that there's going to be amplification. And I don't know whether that's going to be for music outside. But I think the Guthrie Center should take into account, there are people who want to enjoy their homes over the weekend. And this is for three days and it's for hours each of those three days. And it's going to be the summertime. We're going to want our windows open. There's going to be no escaping it. And again, the Guthrie Center in the past has been a good neighbor. There've been events going on there you wouldn't know other than increased traffic. But I'm very concerned about this particular event.
Thank you, Michelle. So I do have a question, first of all. The DRT staff has reviewed the proposed event attached. We have the following information in comments. Number two is if the above number of attendees requires that the Guthrie Center is willing to hire a police officer, period. At this time, the police department will not require, will not require. I hear there's more of that, that's. Do I have a motion and you could take the motion that you are, we are requiring a police officer?
I never paid for that.
Yeah. They're willing to do it.
I make a motion to approve two temporary weekday entertainment license and one temporary Sunday entertainment license for the clam gathering of the Guthrie Center with the condition that they hire a police officer for the, for the events on Friday, June twenty third from twelve PM to seven PM. Saturday, June twenty fourth from twelve PM to seven PM and Sunday, June twenty fifth from ten PM to six PM.
I'm sorry. I hesitate to ask them to get a police officer that the police department didn't think was necessary and would rather you let them use their judgment than Lisa's judgment. Just because it's not cheap. The detail.
It is true. It's not cheap. It's also two hundred people, which for just traffic law, maybe a good idea to have a police officer there. Maybe, but you're right.
I mean, my concern is actually the lawns of the people across Division Street. I don't know if that's being protected. But if people, the people aren't parking in Division, they're parking, they're not crossing Division, they're crossing. Was that Van Duzelville? This doesn't get a lot of high speed traffic.
It does.
I think, this is crispy. I think the, the plan in your packet shows the parking taking place immediately behind the center.
Right.
On the same side of Van Duzelville as the center, so.
Yeah, I just hate to require them to take expensive police officer that the police department has defined necessary.
Could we ask them to use their own staff? I mean, you know, maybe so they, we do have someone, but they're not paying, you know, that.
We could.
Because that, that's.
Who's paying?
It's quite expensive, so. Maybe if we require them to have a staff or some lease.
Mark, what is the cost of the detail? Do you know, apparently?
It's fifty two dollars an hour.
With a, it's like a four hour minimum, I think.
Yeah, well, we're way over the four hour.
That would be their cost.
Yeah, let them worry about.
We're just saying it's a non-profit center and you might wanna.
Yeah.
Use their whole budget.
So I guess, yeah, I'd ask them to have the motion changed to.
I'd be happy to do that.
I didn't second it.
I can rescind.
Got any order or something?
Okay, so then I make a motion to approve two temporary weekday entertainment license and one temporary Sunday entertainment license for the Guthrie Center with the condition that they hire at least one staff person to help with parking on Friday, June twenty third from twelve PM to seven PM. Saturday, June twenty fourth from twelve PM to seven PM and Sunday, June twenty fifth from ten PM to six PM.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussions. And something happened and this non-authoritative person walks up and something happened. Where does the responsibility go? What happens? And that's why I think we need an officer there and that's their expense. They have to maybe figure that out. I know it's not a profit. I'm all about that. I'm also about safety and who's going to incur the suing, if you will, the person who doesn't have the authority to direct traffic. As a, as a snappier, a blunder, whatever, causing a problem.
Yeah, we just defer to the police that didn't think it was necessary.
Yeah, the police said it wasn't necessary, Michelle.
Michelle LeBeare, seventy Division Street, number one, if you're leaving it up to the Guthrie Center, who's to say that some eighteen year old kid isn't the person out there? Okay, you're, you're compromising the safety of my neighborhood. And I'm not happy again about it. Okay, somebody's going to get hurt. And yes, there, like you go to Tanglewood, there's police officers there and you go to other events, there's police officers. Hell, even in my own house, I have somebody watching who's going to be sleeping in my house. But you're talking about the safety in our neighborhood and Ed, there is a lot of traffic on Van Duzelville Road. There's been complaints about the heavy traffic, not to mention it's industrial area above. You have four mouths trucks. This is going to be a Friday and a Saturday. Four mouths is open. You got four mouths trucks, Rogers Trucking's trucks, Nolan's trucks.
Thank you, Michelle.
And it's had, I've seen it happen, Steve. Sometimes they park over the railroad.
We have a motion, we have a second. Does anyone have any other comments?
Well, considered my discussion, my, my thoughts.
I heard you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Of course.
Aye.
So it does not pass. I want these people to have it, but when you have two hundred people in a residential neighborhood, I think you hire a police officer.
Yeah. I got to do that.
You know, and the Guthrie Center has been good neighbors, they're good people. They, they said that they would hire a police officer.
Yeah.
Hire a police officer.
Yeah.
And it's appreciated.
And they don't have a huge parking lot, so it's going to be a public property somewhere.
They do own the field behind the church and they have had parking there.
I'm not sure if you guys can still hear me, but yeah, we're more than willing to hire a police officer. That's, that's a non-issue for us. We can, we can afford it. I didn't know if I was muted or still, or not still.
No, I didn't, I didn't mute.
Yeah, that's, that's, if, if that's what would hold it up, that is a non-issue for us. It is an expense, but the safety of the community is, is our utmost priority.
Thank you. Eileen, go ahead.
I was just confused as to what the vote was on the motion and what the motion was.
The motion was to hire, to approve this two day, two temporary weekday entertainment license and one temporary Sunday entertainment license and ask the Guthrie Center to hire someone to help with traffic. Not a police officer. And it failed with a two to two vote, our field against Lee and Ed voted for it.
So one more time, Eileen.
Oh. It's for the other?
No, the same motion with the police.
Okay. Should I start with the first, the first one?
No, we passed the first one. We're on the.
Okay. I make a motion to approve two temporary weekday entertainment licenses and one temporary Sunday entertainment license for the clam gathering at the Guthrie Center with the condition that they hire a police officer.
Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay.
I was just wondering why you have the Guthrie Center, if they could just address the amplification outdoor amplification.
Just a few else here, is the music outdoors amplified or is it indoors?
So the, the, during the evening, it will be indoors amplified. There will be some, we plan to have some music outdoors, but it will not be all day. You know, there was a few acts that we were, you know, potentially having out in the lawn. We're not going to blast the amplification and those acts will not be through the entirety of the day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. The select board vote to transmit proposed zoning amendments, including those by citizen petition to the planning board for a public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to transmit the proposed zoning amendments stated and in the packet, including those by citizens petition to the planning board for a public hearing.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We have two Arbor Day proclamations. Let's just read the two thousand twenty three and the motion will say two thousand twenty two and twenty three.
Okay, gotcha. Arbor Day proclamation, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three. Whereas Arbor Day celebrates the will of trees in our lives and promotes true planting and care. It was initiated in eighteen seventy two by Sterling Horton of Nebraska City, who said other holidays focus upon the past. Arbor Day focuses on the future. Arbor Day is now celebrated through the nation and the world. Whereas trees are important, we couldn't live without them. They clean the air and produce the oxygen we breathe. They provide habitat for wildlife and help to keep the climate in balance. They give us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. Whereas trees increase, increase property values and enhance the beauty and vitality of our community. Whereas planting trees is an act of kindness and optimism. The celebration of Arbor Day represents a priceless opportunity for all of you to take positive actions and make your world a better place. Therefore, we, the members of the select board of the town of Great Barrington, do proclaim April twenty.
So it's April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three.
April twenty eighth? Two thousand twenty.
April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two. Be close up.
Okay, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty two and April twenty, twenty, April twenty ninth, twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. To be known as Arbor Day in Great Barrington. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, planting and caring for trees and the support efforts in our town to protect our trees.
So the motion is to approve the Arbor Day proclamation for two thousand twenty two and twenty three. Please say so moved.
Seven.
Seven. Any discussion?
Well, I'll bring that up after.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. So two little things, Mark, I assume you've already done this, but you might want to put it on your operations calendar to ask the committee if you want to do that, if they want to do this.
Yeah, I, I will do that. I believe part of the problem was that they didn't have a quorum last year.
Oh. And then the other thing is, is very picky, but if this already exists, the last line of the first paragraph, the period should be before the quotation, not after. Unless you're in England. Good one. But that's for next year also.
If you know, you're running close. Anything else? Anything?
No, no, I'm not.
That's a good, okay, last on the agenda, at least the new business, town manager's annual performance evaluation in the packet and on the website is Mark's evaluation, it's exemplary and all the comments and the individual select boards scores and their comments are there. Just say we all feel very fortunate to have Mark here and another year has gone by and where I can speak for the whole select board because I've read their evaluations and we're all very happy. So thank you, Mark, and we hope you feel better.
Yes.
Thank you all for taking the time to complete the annual evaluation. I appreciate the positive feedback and look forward to working with you in the coming year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Citizens in speak time. Yes, go ahead.
Claudia Shapiro, seventy, Long Plain Road, just can reiterate, I'm here tonight due to a notice, it means federal grant application dated for today, February thirteenth, with a public hearing for virtue of the nature prize.
Thank you, and it is the twenty seventh and we will hear from Claudia again. Thank you, Claudia.
Thanks so much.
Anyone else? Select board time, Garco. Please. And I have nothing, media time. By unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Chris, thank you for joining us, buddy.